This is the City of Elleswood Planning Board Meeting for February 7th, 2024. Uh, introductions, please.
Mark Rich, board member.
Nelson Gill, member.
John DeLeo, chair.
Rick Lyles, vice chair.
Mike Hanga, alternate voting member. Voting alternate member.
No, you were.
I have to vote.
I thought he was the real deal now.
No, not until February.
Staff introductions.
They still keep me as an alternate, Stephen.
I know they do.
Matt Williams, city planner.
Lori Roberts, code enforcement.
Robert Grant, code enforcement.
Thomas Cannon, Ellesworth Fire.
Okay, thank you. The thoughts in a minute from the January 3rd, 2024 regular meeting. Any discussions, any changes?
Good.
All in check.
Sure.
Okay. All of ABA. Item number three, it's listed as a preliminary plan review, but actually it's going to be a sketch plan review of a major subdivision entitled The Village Phase Two for applicant owner Village Way LLC. Proposals create a 14 lot cluster subdivision. The subject property is approximately 140 acre lot located at Village Way Tax Map 46, Lot 19, in the drinking water zoning district. Someone here representing Village Way LLC.
Steve, Stephen Salisbury for the applicant.
For again, so just make a vote to amend the agenda to reflect sketch plan, please.
Make a mo- Molly will make a motion to reflect that this is actually a sketch plan review.
Yes.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Say second.
All in favor.
Thank you.
Yes, so this, yes, this is a sketch plan review. That was my intention all along. Um, well, to get to preliminary, I'll have to supply you with road design, water line designs, and a whole bunch of other things. So, we are adding, proposing to add 14 lots. Continuing with the phase one concept of small parcels with a large dedicated common Located wholly within the same master parcel. Uh, but it'll just add on to the common land that we started with phase one. There's a little bit more road we'll have to build. Much of the road, um, is already built. Electric lines are in, on the existing road and the water lines and things like that. These lots will have private septic beach fields. And supplied by city water, so we don't have to worry about separation. That's kind of why coming in under the cluster development idea. So I can go with the smaller lots.
I'm sorry, say that last part again, please.
We're going with the smaller lots because we don't have to wa- worry about the water supply. It's public water, so we can put the septic systems close together and have those smaller I think there's like eight or nine homes built on phase one now. So it's getting built out.
So, I mean, phase, I mean, originally phase one was going to be single family houses.
Yes.
And now it's.
Then we came back to.
And the combination of single family houses and duplexes.
Multifamily housing.
Yep. Now, the other, I mean, not that we're dealing with that, just curiosity, are the other vacant lots in phase one, are they thinking of duplexes or?
Those will be singles. Yeah.
And then, oh, and the new phase two is all single family houses.
All singles, yeah. At the moment, you know.
It changed once before.
If the owner says he wants duplexes in there, I'll be back.
On this one, so it's going to be a cluster, and so you're going to have to set aside a certain amount of acres.
Yeah, the second sheet of the plan set shows the set aside in the upper right corner of the whole property. The second, the second sheet shows you the entire couple hundred acres.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And we're adding on to the common land that we've already started to set aside. And the people in phase one, uh, phase two will have access to the phase one common land. It won't be segregated. They can walk about wherever they want to go.
Right, the whole development is one subdivision, so it's split out visually, so you can see where the phase one common lot is and the phase two is, but in reality, just all really one big common lot.
Now, the common lot for both phases, I mean, is there anything going to be done with that, or is it just?
Just set aside for, for, to meet the density requirements.
Right.
Makes a nice buffer because, and you can see it from the, our road, the solar development that you approved between the Twin Hills, uh, is boom right there in your face.
Yeah, you can see it.
Yeah, you can see it, which is fine.
Now, in, in your description of, uh, Village Way Phase Two, uh, you talk about homeowners association. You also mentioned, uh, the community building.
Yes.
Could you give a little?
Uh, we've built this, there's already, we just recently built a, uh, community building. There was a little small piece of community land between the subdivision road, Route One. We put up, I don't know, it's like a 15 by 30 building that, that will be, that will house the, uh, mailboxes inside that building for, we, and we plan like four or five phases. Um, but it's big enough to accommodate much more development.
I'm not questioning you, um, on that figure, but I'm questioning you on that figure. It seems to be in my eyes that it's more like 50 by 20.
It could be.
And you also mentioned, I mean, there's going to be a homeowners association, so that will, will that be a home, one homeowners association for the whole?
That's right, one homeowners association for the whole development.
Phase one and two.
Yeah, as new members command, and they'll just keep adding on to the same association. Now, some developments do phase it, and they have separate homeowners associations for different phases, but, uh, the plan here is just to have one.
So the, I mean, the, the buildings, the duplexes that are in phase one now, I mean, those owners would be basically paying five times what a, a single homeowner would pay. I mean, is a homeowners association paying by lot?
Yes, a proportioned amount of maintenance go to each lot.
And does the homeowners association exist now?
Uh, not formally, because it's, all these buildings and properties are still developer owned. He's renting the homes and apartments. Should such time he starts selling the properties, then we'll have to formalize the agreement.
But that is the intent, is to sell those and pass off?
Eventually, yeah. Right now, he's doing it for an income, you know, building houses, running them, and making that an income.
I'm pretty sure, um, this is the phase one plan, and there was a note about the formation of the homeowners association.
Yep.
Um, within the phase one plan, so, uh, the similar note when it comes back, um, can be, will be put on the phase two plan as well, discussing the homeowners association. Yeah, associate that to be the homeowners association agreement declaration of covenants to be recorded at the Hancock County Registry of Deeds.
Yep.
And then.
Which will do upon sale the first parcel, because they'll have to elect officers and set up the formal association at some point.
Now, the two houses that were originally built, the small houses.
Yep.
Those owned by the developer.
They are.
Or they, they were never sold.
He bought the homes and the, and the land and everything, and are now rented.
And this is as much to, to Matt as it is to you, what is the real purpose that, of a, of cluster zoning in this particular kind of context? I mean, based on, you know, planning unit development type stuff and cluster zoning type stuff that I'm familiar with from other places, okay? You know, the, the typical thing would be to have, you know, a, a bunch of houses around a common open space, and that's, that's it. In this particular instance, we have houses over here and the open space that is, you know, part of the cluster, you know, way the hell over there someplace. And I, you know, does this execution of a cluster zone really meet with the spirit of what cluster zoning is supposed to be about?
Well, I can answer that.
Yeah, right.
You know, our, our ordinance is a little silent on what, you know, the desired use of a, of open space or shared common lot is. Um, so, you know, I think like when it was originally drafted, there may have been the intent that it's shared space, but there is, you know, depending on how you look at it, there is value, particularly in this development, to just have forested wetland space still existing because it's so close to the drinking water supply. Um, now, you know, again, if we go through, add to the ordinance, and we decide like, yeah, you could have like this lot, uh, or this space on the lot that's conserved like forever, put a conservation easement on that portion of the lot to keep habitat intact. Um, you could say if you're going to do that, there's a minimum amount trail, you have to put them through that so the public could be, so that this development could have recreational space. Um, but really, the, the offset is that it's greener to do cluster development from where it's eco, uh, environmentally friendly, because you're using up less space, and then you're just kind of tight, tightening up the, um, development itself, so there's less asphalt, the roads can be shorter.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the better way to deal, and this is perhaps, you know, for another day in a way, wouldn't it be better to deal with that in, in some other way directly? Like, you know, just make it so that the density allowed in this area is different? Because, you know, I, I understand that the, you know, that it's useful to have open space that conserving, as conserving, it's conserved land someplace, but I really don't get it with, I don't, I really don't understand the way that's actually being executed in this particular instance. I mean, I understand that, okay, it's over there, but, you know, it could be across the road and over the woods, and it would, it would serve that purpose that you're talking about.
Well, right, I mean, and your point's well taken, it's just that our ordinance is currently silent on exactly how it needs to be used.
Which leads me to the idea that when we're going through our ordinances and, and defining things, and how they're supposed to be used, and what it's supposed to mean, and the spirit and the actualization and so forth, that we should be addressing this as, along with planning unit development, which is clearly related.
Yeah.
So, I'm.
But to one extent, though, um, allowing the clust- cluster subdivision, especially on a lot such as this, which appears has a lot of wetland, is, so you're reducing the individual lot to, my eyesight is not that good.
No, the calculation on here isn't going to be quite that.
I mean, it's about three tenths of an acre, four tenths of an acre.
Yeah, that's right.
Per lot, where in this zone, a regular house lot needs to be two acres.
Right.
And so, you know, you'd be hard pressed to probably fit 14 two acre lots in amongst all the wetland.
There may, there may be. I mean, that may be, I'm not, I'm not arguing that point, okay? I guess what I'm arguing is that it, it seems a workaround just to get a higher density that's really not, you know, it's kind of.
I'd support the idea that, and this again, this is zoomed out a little bit, but I'd support the idea that it's worth a discussion, because this is the second time in, I think, four months it's come up. I had a very similar comment about the development out on the Trenton Line, where all the homes were very tightly clustered. There was a glut of land like attached to the back of the property, so that the divisor for the average lot size could, could need a mathematical metric, and it may not be a bad idea, I agree. I mean, it may be totally fine, but it does kind of make you go, hmm, what, what's the intention, what's the spirit here, so?
Yeah, and I, and, you know, and, and if that's what we decide the spirit should be, then cool, right? Uh, but it strikes me that, you know, if you're really just trying to have a higher density development up closer to the road, then we ought to be able to allow that in a more straightforward fashion. Next question. I see that there are on the map that, whatever, the first map in the set, there are these little spurs that go off that say future road that goes off into the wilderness. Uh, what's the deal with those?
That'll be phases four and five in my mind. I've, I've got a master plan that'll show another loop road off the loop road that we're showing here to access the future lots.
Will that be a cluster zone also?
Under, under our court ordinance, yes. You know, if we change your ordinance, my plan goes out the window maybe, but.
Or, or we just allow higher density in places.
Mm-hmm. Well, this zone requires two acre per dwelling unit, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess, I guess the thing is, I mean, I have, you know, conserving green spaces is a good idea, having gunship development in certain areas is a good idea. Uh, and I think we're kind of getting at it in kind of a backwards kind of way personally.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be more direct. You said the ordinance is a bit silent on it, we obviously are asking questions up here, and I'm not suggesting anybody is doing this, but it should be corrected so it doesn't feel like there's gamesmanship going on with the mathematics, right? It should just be clear that this is allowed or not allowed, and it doesn't look like somebody's playing games with the rules, which is, it's got a bit of an air of that.
Yeah, I mean, I, it just, I have density in the drinking water zone, you know, again, like maybe it'll change, maybe it won't, but like in this zone in particular, um, maybe part of the ordinance update is just updating, like if you're going to do a cluster development in the particular zone here, the allowable, like, oh, common lot uses or something in that way. So that way, in a zone like this, where the wet, preserving the wetland is a useful thing, it's still allowed, but then like in the more dense urban area, it's like, yeah, you've got to put like a picnic area or playground, so that the whole cluster development can use that, and the community can use that.
I mean, this is an area, I mean, this is a huge area around Branch Lake that requires two acres.
It's the whole watershed.
It's like 25% of the city's land mass requires.
Yeah, I mean, that was changed about 15, 20 years ago, and, I mean, presumably to help protect Branch Lake, you know, is, has that accomplished the goal? You know, is that something, you know, in the future, we say, well, these do, we really need people on, I, I live on Red Bridge, one side is two acres, one side is one acre.
Yep.
So, I mean.
You're on the watershed divide there. You're on the watershed divide, because some of that does flow towards the lake, and some flows away from it. Probably a hundred years from now before we know if it is effective or not.
Uh, I guess one other, we've kind of talked about this a little in the past, and it's kind of brought up again, but it, it has to do with the household trash disposal. And I'm, you think, I mean, there's, the plan was to just put it at the end of the road and.
Yeah, the, the owner tells me they don't put it at the end of the road, they take it to transfer station, so.
And I mean, if there's many buildings that could be there.
Yeah.
A lot of trash, and I'm, I'm kind of not comfortable with, with homeowners or renters just dumping it on the side of the road.
No.
There's multiple bins throughout the property, actual like.
Yeah.
Bins that get dumped into a dump truck.
Yeah, the owner comes around, takes the trash to the transfer station.
Oh, they have dumpsters there then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, I don't call them dumpsters, but.
What do you call them?
Garbage, garbage.
Things.
Garages or something like that.
Garbage garages?
Yeah.
Really? Okay, I thought like that.
Okay, so it wasn't a case of everybody just going to dump it.
No.
At Village Way and, uh.
No, that's something we talked about a while ago, and that's not what ended up going on.
So the structures to keep the animals out of the.
Yeah, to keep the.
Okay.
How much of those understandings, I mean, and I'm not questioning that, but how, how, how much of those understandings need to be committed to paper here going forward?
No, I mean, so we talked about in TRT about what the, the actual trash collection process would be, and so when it comes back for preliminary, um, or when it talks about the homeowners association, it'll list out what the homeowners association is actually responsible for. And so if it's the maintenance of these collection bins for garbage, and, you know, if the homeowners association has to organize how the trash gets from those bins to the transfer station, that's part of, uh, that agreement.
I don't really, would go to how many bins there are.
Yeah. You'd have to show them where they are located on the site plan.
Yeah, something, a little narrative at least.
Yeah.
I'll come up with something.
And you have no problem, I mean, you, I mean, this is, some of this is existing, so the site distances and so forth, um, at the driveway entrance or whatever you, that gets the street entrance on Bucksport Road has been kind of, MDOT has taken a look at that, is that correct?
Well, that's the city's responsibility, and that was.
Oh, because that's our road?
Yeah, Atlantic Highway is a city-owned and maintained.
Got it, got it.
Piece of road.
When this was originally put in, that was a bone of contention, believe me, because originally it was, the road was a little closer to the Bucksport Road.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I mean, just based on where, it's on our road, it, you know, has to go by our site distance.
Right.
And originally, if I remember correctly, the road was not far enough away to meet the site distance, and, uh, Bruce Matson was an MDOT engineer at the time, came out, and that was back in Michelle Gannon days, and we had a lot of discussion, and Steve, didn't you do the original?
Yeah, yeah, I remember talking, we, we actually had a planning board meeting at the site, looking at that entrance.
Yeah.
So that would be the entrance onto Atlantic?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, but that was approved in the first phase.
Yeah, and, because we wanted it back as far away from the Bucksport Road, just because of people turning off the Bucksport Road and, and there's Village Way.
Yeah, because Atlantic Highway is kind of like a off-ramp, because you can make such a quick turn off the Bucksport Road without slowing down. Hasn't been a problem.
When you had that long and arduous discussion, um, how many units did you assume were going to be back in here?
Well, the original one was, was a small.
Well, no, at that time, I'm.
No, we, we're talking four or five phases back then.
Right, okay.
That wasn't a mystery.
So that's not a new wrinkle in that sense?
No.
Okay.
No, I showed, if you, I don't have it with me, but the phase one plan showed the, the loop roads going off in, in the future.
Okay.
And as you can see, quite a bit of the road that got built wasn't even lotted off at that time, so it was obvious we were going to come back and, and populate the rest of the road frontage.
Yeah, I don't remember if it was in the planning board application for phase one, but I do, from previous, uh, planning documents have like the, maybe an original version of the master plan.
Yeah.
You'd mentioned that shows all, all the phases.
In the, uh, this form that you fill out here, uh, one was talk, talking about, and this goes to that sort of thing, uh, indicate the nature of any restrictive covenants to be placed in the deeds. I mean, I, I understand what that means. TBD was to be determined?
Yes.
So, will it TBD by the time we get to preliminary final, or just sometime?
Um, I think we supplied proposed covenants and conditions and homeowners docs before, so we'll resupply those again.
Usually, if the information that is going to be in those documents is available for you to review at preliminary, the actual draft, final draft document, we don't ask until, until final.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, that's on the docket to be received at some point along the line here.
Yes.
Tom, right now, the timber cul-de-sac, I don't know, they're early in the process, but that's sufficient for fire department at the, you know, Village Loop Way.
Yeah, there is.
Right after Lot 14.
Yeah, um, right now, the way that it is, um, we know it's going to be for future use, there's only three houses there, and it's less than, um, less than the requirement, because they're also going to have the, the future road there, um, probably a turning radius essentially to back into. Because Steve, Steve and I sat and talked about this, is that probably before they even get finished or really get going, he'll probably be back for the next four, for phase four and five, to be able to finish out the, the loop road and stuff like that.
And one last question. Uh, and the TRT thing, uh, under Public Works, it says need an engineer to certify that the road was built to city standards. Uh, which exact road are we talking about there, the whole thing, or?
Well, yeah, eventually, all, all the roads that are, uh, constructed, but that comment was in particular to Village Way.
I'm sorry, say again.
Eventually, all of the roads that are constructed will have to have like the road profile and make an engineer to confirm they're built to city standards.
Okay.
That comment was specific to Village Way.
Is, um, are these roads that are on the site plan, are they going to be comm city streets then? No?
No, that's not the intention.
I don't know if you've been out there, but half of the, I guess I would say the second half of the road has been paved.
Okay, I have not, I have not.
Presumably during the construction or at some point.
The rest of it will be, we just got to put the, he's waiting to put the electrical conduits under the street, the poles go down the street, but not any overhead wires, the wires to the individual houses are underground, so you got to cut those across.
Big question maybe for Tom. Hydrants need to be properly installed. I guess I would always presume that, so is there a reason that's explicitly called out here?
We ran into in the phase one, um, Reggie had found a hydrant that was not, um, had proper backing, proper, um, blockage, block that was supposed to be in, in place, so it was just a, hey, please put this on this for future reference for your future projects. Any, they do any other hydrants, they need to have this, they need to meet the standard for the installation of that.
Okay.
Um, same thing, it was like, it was the same page as Reggie. Um, he was, you know, there were certain things for Reggie that he wanted as well, so we wanted to just make sure it was noted on the TRT report.
Got you, okay, so don't copy paste what you did. And is the original one, is that remediated, or?
Uh, it will be the spring. Ground froze by the time we were able to, to try to do anything.
So Steve, is the Village Loop Road going to have the same dimensions as Village Way with the 60 foot right of way and everything?
Yes.
Any other questions? And I hope this for Public Gary. Anybody in the peanut gallery?
Peanut gallery.
Close the bubble, Gary?
Let's have a little respect for this, and I was going to say, come on.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
All right, we don't have to take any action, so I guess you're.
We'll see until April, but, just getting engineering docs together and stuff.
Sounds good.
Turnaround is pretty tight.
I'll be here.
For the short month, yes.
Item number four, preliminary plan review of a revision on existing subdivision entitled 59 Franklin for applicant Cory, and I'm going to mess up the pronunciation.
Regent.
Regent.
Uh, owner 59 Franklin LLC. The proposal is construct two dwelling units on a lot with an existing structure subdivision. The subject property is an approximately 0.27 acre lot located at 59 Franklin, Tax Map 134, Lot 33 in downtown zoning district. And we have Cory here.
Before Cory starts, um, tonight, you received, um, some email correspondences from, uh, fire inspector between him and the state fire marshal's office. Um, it was just information that was intended to be included in the packet, and we just received it a little late from the applicant, so if you just review it, it's just an explanation of why, or in Thomas's review of the project, how it could have had to be reviewed by the state fire marshal, his correspondence with the state fire marshal, and the ultimate determination that it would get, uh, reviewed by the municipality, um, instead, so you have to make a vote to accept that into your packets.
So you want us to take a vote to accept that into the packet?
Yes.
Third motion?
Can I just say so moved?
Yes.
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second, yeah.
All of ABA. Okay. So yours, Cory, and maybe before getting into these specifics, maybe just update the board on what you did before, because it's all, it's all kind of tied together.
Yep, phase one was the, what is labeled as the North Wing, formerly a restaurant, which was three dwelling units and, um, a storefront, which was just reserved as future use, which we're declaring in this one, we're going to retain as a commercial storefront. And then, phase two is the continuation of the property rehabilitation, would be labeled as the South Wing, which is two dwelling units, one being three bedrooms, the other being four bedrooms with a shared kitchen space.
So I guess my first question was, I'm, this is more towards staff, um, because looking at this, we're talking about dwelling units.
Yep.
And I was, in, in reading the definitions of dwelling units, I was really not sure if this, these were actually dwelling units by definition.
Well, I think, you know, the applicant can make an argument one way or another that these are single family attached dwelling units, um, you know, definitions, I'll just read out loud, states, uh, building designed or intended to be used exclusively for residential occupancy by no more than two families, and containing two separate dwelling units in one structure. Um, and so if you look at the whole wing, the wing for phase two, uh, the idea that there's two dwelling units, um, in that wing, and then that each suite, so to speak, is a room within that dwelling unit, um, you know, that's, is currently designed to be lived in by more than one family, it seems, but in the short. in the short-term rental sense, we don't regulate whether or not someone can do that or not at this time. And so, again, like there could be an argument, Cory can make that for himself, but that it is considered a duplex in a sense as an attached single-family home. But also there are ways in the design where the board could look at this and say, I don't agree with that, and make that determination. But that's why we're here tonight to talk about it. So after speaking to the Fire Marshal and code officer, in order to retain the rights to be used as short-term rental for city ordinance purposes, the Phase Two here we're talking about, we would like to label as a bed and breakfast.
Okay, so the reason I brought the question up about the dwelling unit, because under definitions, dwelling unit is defined as a room or suite of rooms used as a habitation, which is separate from other such room or suite of rooms, which contains independent living, cooking facilities, as defined in this article, sleeping facilities, as defined in this article, bathing and sanitary facilities. And that goes to explain what single-family houses duplexes. So I was just a little confused as to whether, and these are bedroom units, three-bedroom units and four-bedroom units being served by, I guess you could call it a double kitchen?
Yep.
And that's, well, is that really a dwelling unit? If it's now a bed and breakfast, does that really meet our, I'm just trying to figure out what exactly this is.
In the definitions, a bed and breakfast is a dwelling unit. So the bed and breakfast itself, so yeah, so the way that I've interpreted this is it's two dwelling units. You know, you have the suite of rooms, one's four, a suite of three rooms, one's a suite of four rooms. And you have those, that suite of rooms has its own shared kitchen, but then, you know, if then that, that compound or the collection of suites, they have the necessary sleeping areas, the cooking areas, and the bathroom facilities as separate from the second collection of suite of rooms, which would be the second dwelling unit. The question to Cory was, what is each individual dwelling unit? Is a bed and breakfast is a single-family residential home? Like, was he coming to present to the board? And I had asked him to kind of sort that out to come talk to you tonight, but.
I must say, I've never been bored. I'm a little confused. Am I interpreting this correctly, that you have two kitchens that are connected?
Uh, well, the one kitchen space contains two kitchens worth of appliances. Because it's serving three suites.
Essentially, yes.
I see. For my own edification, I might conceptually be able to better, sir?
Keep going.
For my own edification, I might better conceptualize this if these green lines were not on here and I could separate out the units. I, I'm.
If you look, there's a thickened line, a portion of it is highlighted. Thomas wanted me to point out the one-hour firewalls, that's what that's depicting. There is an arrow there pointing to what is a thickened line around Unit One J, I believe. Did you get the updated number? Okay, yes, it is the updated. So yes, Unit One J and One F, there's a thickened wall that runs from the front to the back to the building.
Sure.
That designates the separation between the units, so on the leftmost portion of the building, those three suites have access to the one kitchen. On the rightmost portion, those four units have access to the opposite kitchen. So, so all units can't use either kitchen, they prefer.
Mm-hmm.
They're.
Okay.
So One J, whatever you call that unit or whatever, and One F are actually separate? That you can't pass from one to the other directly, is that correct or incorrect?
Well, you cannot pass from any suite to another suite directly. You can pass into the kitchen, but each individual suite would have the right to lock that door because that's their private space.
Okay, so if I'm in One J?
Correct.
Where's my kitchen?
Uh, the door that's attached to it, you would, it would be to the right.
Oh, I see it. Okay, okay.
Yep, each unit has a direct access from the exterior and then their own access into the kitchen space.
Okay, and then One F has?
Would be sharing the same kitchen space.
And where's its door? Way back here?
Right under four point one two.
Is that, is there a door inside?
Yeah, that goes, yeah, that goes.
This way? I mean, this allows this way and that way? Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
So One J and One F are two separate rooms, correct?
Yes.
Two separate living rooms, in other words, they're not combined, you don't have the same family staying in those two rooms. There'd be two different families.
Well, you potentially could be.
I mean, one family could choose to rent all four units.
So you're dividing, your large dividing line that kind of goes between One G, One F, and One J. Your green lines don't correspond to one-hour fire rating here, as far as I can see. The little section in One J and One F that's behind the shower wall, et cetera? That's got to be a one-hour rated wall. It has to continue back through. You don't have a proper separation between One J and One F. There's no, that, you're not indicating that as being one hour.
Okay. Yeah, these are the ones that when Thomas already viewed, he's the one he's pointed out to highlight, so we can make that notation. Because it's a.
Yeah, so behind the toilet and the shower on One F.
Between One F and One J.
Yeah.
What's the requirement for that to be a?
One hour, you're separating two separate rooms, you're separating two separate living spaces. Two separate individuals, two separate families or whatever. Unless this is combined as one living space, then you've got to separate them properly.
I think we said, if there's the potential for two separate renters on either side, then you need the separation.
I mean, you're doing that, you're doing that elsewhere, correct?
Between dwelling units, correct.
You agree with that, Tom?
I think our discussion was that it was because they were sleeping quarters, but if that's what code says, then that's what we'll do.
I mean, the issue is that they may be sleeping quarters, but they're in, they're separate families or separate individuals that are not related in any way, so you've got totally separate spaces.
I think what it came to be was is that it kind of was a full thirteen sprinkler system that allows a reduced rating.
Minimum requirement is one hour.
Right.
Otherwise you'd have to have, you'd have to have more than one hour if it wasn't sprinkled.
But they are in fact part of the same dwelling unit.
Correct. And this is what was proposed.
I guess I don't understand how they can be part of the same dwelling unit when they're separated. They have separate means of egress out of each room.
I can address that point. Due to soundproofing, they're going to end up being one-hour rated walls or higher anyways because we will be doing five A's on both sides of the wall. So I think it might be a moot point.
Well, you need to show that detail somewhere. I'm not, I can't accept that the way it's drawn right now. It's very confusing.
I just think for.
It is confusing, but this is what was proposed to the Fire Marshal's office and they had it. This is what they had accepted.
I think if the board were to see this, where the separate units were highlighted, it would be much more clearer to us. I, I'm starting to wrap my brain around it and I'm seeing where there's the three separate living dwellings. But if there was some way to highlight, okay, this is Unit One, this is Unit Two, then I think that issue that you're bringing up would actually disappear.
So you'd like to see more clarification on the separation of the two dwelling units and additionally the separation of each suite?
Yeah, because the suite of the One F and the One J, those actually are part of the same dwelling.
So what you're saying, you take out the overlays and just add the blank canvas to show.
Yes.
And One E and One K are also part of that, right?
Yes.
I mean, so you got two bedrooms on one side of the kitchen module?
Right.
And two bedrooms on the other side, and a common kitchen kind of in the middle.
Yes, and I think that's what's confusing the board.
Well, it's certainly confusing this board.
Well, me for sure.
Mike, I think that if I'm reading your logic correctly, wouldn't, would you not have the same issue between E and K and H and I on the left and right? Again, those are interior walls, they're not highlighted as green, which on this plan indicates one-hour firewalls.
Between E and what?
So the top left and the bottom left, and the top right and the bottom right of that wing? One E and One K on the right and One H and One I on the left? Is it not the same, the same logic that you just described?
That's correct.
Essentially, it's all walls in there then.
Because it would, to me, it would look almost like a duplex. Okay? A duplex regardless is required to have one-hour fire separation, period. Right? Which in other words, everything needs to have a one-hour fire separation, if that's what we're, if that's what we're looking at.
Do you see any logic in what I just drew?
But the thing is, is that this is two dwelling units in one. Not six individual, in six individual things, we have to, you have to separate between where the, where the cutoff is between the two units are.
And I understand that, but I think where it's getting additionally confused is maybe dwelling units, but they're rental units, so you may have, and I understand the rules will probably be no smoking, but this is the real world. In the real world, you may have guest number one smokes the room up and burns it down. And guest number two thinks they're safe because my family's a non-smoking family, but they're just on the other side of the wall of the bad behavior. So that, again, I'm thinking like in the dwelling unit, is there a presumption that it's one family and you're going to control your area, but you cannot control what the guests on the other side of the wall are doing?
No, and that's the, that's the thing, you take a risk with it, you go to a hotel too. You can't control the neighbors, you can't control any of that stuff. That's why we put in the, we added the sprinkler systems, we had, you know, fire alarm systems, smoke detectors, COs for early detection, different stuff like that, to warn other occupants that are in the building to say, hey, you might want to get out there's an emergency. Because we can't control, I can't control you no more than you can control me if we go on an outing. That's, that's way out of our range of saying we can do something about. But with this here is, is that having the dwelling issue between that, they're two rental, two dwelling houses.
So what you're telling me, or what you're saying, is that Room One E, Room One F, Room One J, and Room One K are all one dwelling unit?
Yes, yes.
That's the argument being made.
It's a dwelling unit, but it could be rented out in component parts.
Because it's a B and B.
Correct. But it's for what the requirements.
And the Fire Marshal's office is okay with this?
For what they, for what he proposed, and what you have for the letter from them is what, what I got back from, from Mark. So basically, he's going to be putting, he already has a full thirteen system in there right now with a, with a fire alarm system. He's going to be extending the full thirteen system through the rest of the building and putting a, and having a fully addressable fire alarm system. And the way that they looked at this was is that he went from being a boarding, uh, rooming boarder to back to residential, when he put his, when he put the doors from being exterior to being interior, so he turned it back into residential.
I think that may confuse him because he didn't see the original TRT plan.
Well, that's why I'm just jumping up, like, that's why we're back to this.
Our original plan isolated the kitchen, where you had to leave a unit to enter it.
So it's more like a motel, go outside.
Which made it, by definition, a boarding house. The interior doors basically turn it back into residential. That's fire.
And I get what you're saying, but again, you're talking about a bed and breakfast. This is what he's talking about.
For a city ordinance.
Okay.
For a city ordinance. As far as the Fire Marshal's concerned, for what I got report back was is they're reviewing this as residential.
And we'd like to use the bed and breakfast definition to retain the right for short-term rentals in the long-term scope of things.
So looking at what the Fire Marshal's office has said, on page three, they give the definition of a dwelling unit, okay? And then they give the definition of a one- and two-family dwelling. A building that contains not more than two dwelling units with independent cooking and bathroom facilities. You have four dwelling units or four separate dwelling units for four separate families or individuals not related here.
It doesn't meet the definition of dwelling unit because it falls below four hundred square feet.
By our definition of dwelling unit, each of these suites is not its own dwelling unit. The collection of suites makes one dwelling unit. So there's two proposed dwelling units. And that collection of suites meets the definition of a dwelling unit.
Because the kitchens aren't separate.
But there's not a kitchen in each suite.
And One D, One A through One D are considered four separate?
Uh, that was the previously approved plan. One A was not on there. And we're just retaining One A as a general commercial use for a future LSE to decide what to do with that space.
Do not look at me for clarifications. Just as a little aside here, on the south wing, in terms of this description of this, the south wing, you define one dwelling unit in the terms of the number of bedrooms? And you define the other dwelling unit in terms of the number of bathrooms?
Oh, that's a misprint. That's a, that's a typo.
So bedrooms and bedrooms, maybe?
Correct.
And you might also want to add in there plus shared kitchen or something, just so it's clear what the hell goes with what. And, and you might actually, in this thing here, if this is supposed to explain it all, make reference to the map with one, you know, the Ones and the Js and all that stuff.
Yeah, the determination on our unit numbering and addressing came, I think, the morning of from assessing, because the backside of this unit, he's actually giving an address of Water Street now. So this building is going to be both Franklin and Water Street addressing.
Oh, good.
And that was.
That'll clarify it.
That was driven by the fact that on the backside, there's garage bays and a basement office, that if emergency is responding, Thomas made the point that they're coming to this Franklin Street parking lot. And obviously, everybody knows who's in the basement and where they are if that report comes, but these other One E, One F, One G, and One H have doors that open to the Water Street side. And the determination by assessing was then that side of the building needs to be a Water Street address for emergency response.
I actually understand that.
So you said, I mean, the, the units that are on, let's call it the west side of the building, we have a gray area, a deck, so you come up the steps from kind of lower parking lot?
The Water Street side, correct.
To access those four units.
Yeah, so these are open this way for one.
And then the other three come off of Franklin Street side.
So, okay, so each of these things, One G, One F, One E, whatever, all have a different street address? Is that right?
Yes. E, F, G.
Even though they're considered one dwelling unit?
Or, I think for emergency purposes, they're labeled, yes. But.
Okay.
So they have sequential street numbering rather than a building number and a room number? They actually have sequential street numbers?
No, it's, so Fifty-Nine Franklin, Unit One K, or Fifty-Eight Water Street, Unit One E.
That makes more sense.
It's, he labeled it like an apartment building. Essentially, I believe, since more than fifty percent of the building becomes residential, it's now considered an apartment building as a whole.
I'm not sure if that's what you're asking, but that was, was not clear. So there are, I guess there's technically two building numbers because there's one on each side of the building, but there's only two. It's not.
Yeah, but given that this is all one dwelling unit, it has actually four street addresses.
Yes.
Cory, did you say the units coming in off Water Street are going to have a Water Street address?
Correct. And that was determined by Larry in the assessing department and between, I believe, emergency response.
So this is my point, okay? So if Room E, F, G have separate addresses to Water Street, and Rooms One K, One J, and One I have Franklin Street addresses?
I didn't do that.
They're considered individuals?
I believe you said you'd like the whole thing as Franklin Street at one point, but.
Yes.
Again, this is how Larry.
That was Larry.
This is, this guy here doesn't have a Franklin address, because that door, is that door
You can't get mail at all.
So this guy doesn't have a door this way, just that way.
This is, this is the kitchen, this guy goes this way. This guy goes this way.
Wait, sorry, sorry, sorry. So, and the kitchen
I mean, I guess, but we will have that mail collection with all unit designations, because these aren't necessarily going to be in short term.
So I'd like to separate maybe, I think there's, there's two, there's two questions we're kinda debating here. I think there's the use of the definition, which maybe just kinda table that for a second. But then there's the firewalls. So, I, I think, Corey, you, you had said that at the end of the construction, these would all be one hour rated anyway, so do we actually have an issue, or is the developer committing that these are all
And by default, that's for soundproofing purposes, and five A's is much better soundproofing than
Soundproofing and fire, firewall are two different things, and you need to find, you need to get the proper design for that.
Which he has.
Pass that by him and make sure it's acceptable.
Which I have, I have sent it to him. It's just his use of words here is not coming to me properly to say that it will be, it will be designed to the standard that I have set for it and gave him the paperwork for it already.
So the walls that don't, are not in green, between K and E, and J and F, and I, and I'm not sure what that one is, those all need to be one hour. That's, that wall that goes right down the center, except for the kitchens, all need to be one hour rated walls, from floor to the underside of the roof deck.
Which, which Corey already said, that for soundproofing purposes, that he's gonna be doing fire-rated X, five A sheathing
Whatever design is.
All the way through this building.
His motivation's soundproofing, but as long as you determine that soundproofing aside, it's, it's one hour fire.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is I think Corey was not using the right terminology when he was trying to explain that it's gonna be a fire-rated wall.
So to kinda dumb it down for myself, um, if this is like all green, the next time you come back, I think we'll be happy. I think that's what we're looking for, like, all green. Separating the rooms.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, now somebody, oh, he had mentioned, I think Richard did, is there an address for the kitchens?
I did ask that, I was gonna ask it again.
I wanted to make sure we got back to that.
Yeah, so, so if there's a fire in the kitchen, literally, and they say, whoa, building's got fire in my kitchen, what do I say?
I have not seen anything. I have not seen anything from addressing yet for how he has it labeled. I have, so I cannot sit there and speak to how Larry has it said, how he's addressing this, because he was still up in the air last time I knew, with how he was gonna do the backs, backside of the property for Water Street, and how he was gonna do the front side for Franklin Street.
I think in theory, what you would do is you say, I'm in the kitchen of unit one G, which just happens to be the shared kitchen of one G, one H, one I, and that's how emergency response would
The advantage is with the kitchen is there is a door on both sides, regardless of which side you roll up to, there's
No, there isn't.
No, there isn't.
Or there's not?
There's no direct
No, the kitchen doesn't have a door to the outside.
There's no direct exterior access to the kitchens.
There's no direct exit to the, outside from kitchens.
No, to get to the kitchen, you have to go in through
Somebody's
somebody else's stuff to get
Got it, got it, okay.
to the kitchen, right?
Yep.
It's a shared kitchen.
Yeah, two.
Two shared kitchens.
Actually
Actually, the shared kitchen is shared by four different living spaces.
This is correct. One is, and the other one's three.
I guess you can still get there from here, because you can still go through the unit
Yes. Be no different if I was coming to your house, go through your mudroom to make it through your foyer to get into your kitchen.
I know Thomas made a point that emergency couldn't respond and go directly through a kitchen to a unit, because the kitchen is a high-risk area. Is that correct?
Yeah, so if basically, if we had an emergency, medical emergency on the backside, you can't go through somebody else's kitchen to go through that little area, because especially say if they're cooking, work, that's not gonna, that's not sanitary, and then we're gonna go pick up a patient on the backside of the building, then drag them back through that kitchen again.
That's kinda how the original plan looked, uh, you passed through the Franklin's side kitchen to get to those back units. He said that wasn't possible.
So what we did was
I mean, I get that part, but, but it's, now, now it's the kinda flip side of that, getting to the kitchen, which you have to
That's, the distance from, to get through the door to get to the kitchen is very minimal.
Okay.
And I guess emergency access to each suite is through, was it gonna be digital?
No.
Uh, we have not determined exact, but yeah, basically, we're going with some sort of key card, digital, smart type device, so we don't have to worry about keys.
So we're at a point where this is two dwelling units?
Yes.
Now, I think I know the answer, but if somebody was gonna build a duplex off any road, Christian Ridge, and it's back two hundred feet, is that numbered off Christian Ridge? Because it's two, but if it was three, you'd have to have its own road, is that
Right, two, two dwelling units, you'd have a driveway.
I mean, I can somewhat see what Larry's doing, but that is confusing, as all get out. I mean, is, is that set in stone?
I would, I mean, so I think your decision tonight will kind of inform Corey of that sentence.
So I could say someone actually
Well, no, I'm just, you know, from a Larry Gardner point.
In, in terms of addressing and confusion, uh, we were in what would be one A right now, doing some construction the other day, demolition, and somebody came knocking on the window, where's Ellsworth American? We said, oh, they're on the backside of the building, because they probably saw Franklin Street address, and this is where they came to, the front of the building. So I think that's Larry's point, that emergency's gonna show up here and wonder where the unit is, because they're coming to Franklin Street and not the backside of the building. Because there's no clear path around the building to know there's units back there.
I think that, I, I imagine, Matt, you might know this, like, in large cities with large buildings, the building is the size of the block, with the precedent, I think the precedent is, right, if the address is the, the street you're facing, that large structure.
It's the, it's the, the front access to the building, or to the
So a, a very large building in a city could have four street addresses on four separate streets.
Just depends on, yeah, which way.
Generally, they have one main entrance, correct?
Well, if it's like a square block, you'd have, and say it's, I'm guessing, one in Baltimore, or same ball
Just, just what I'm getting at is, we're not like inventing a whole new concept here, we just don't have a lot of this in Ellsworth.
Right, there's a logic to Larry's decision here, um, I think the question about the kitchen is a fair one, about how would, how would you communicate that to emergency personnel where you're actually at in the structure, but in terms of addressing, I think, again, there's a logic to what Larry wants, or if the front door to that, because it's not really the address of the unit, or the building, the building is going to be all, is really like fifty-nine Franklin, but because these front doors to certain units are on Water Street, he wants them to be referred to as a Water Street address for clarity for emergency personnel. It's kind of a, which was just mentioned to Corey, that if they're not getting mail here, the only point in addressing is really for emergency app, informing emergency personnel where to go, and so it's more of a safety thing than a practical, like, living, like, address, it's not really like a, you can't like go to get your driver's license and put one G, fifteen, or fifty-eight Water
So, I haven't heard anything about whether this is gonna be short term, or you said maybe short term, maybe long term?
Well, if it's a bed and breakfast, then there's a limitation. Our goal here is to offer variety in housing. There's people who are getting thirty-day notices, and you can't find a apartment. This is a stepping stone. Or somebody who's a single person who doesn't need a lot of space, might rent it as a yearly rental. There's a lot of different options, contract nursing rentals, who do three-month terms.
Of course, this was our conversation, you have to kind of commit to one for each dwelling unit, and pick which dwelling unit is gonna be which.
I thought you said a bed and breakfast, we can rent from one indefinitely.
So the
SD for
I'm gonna finish third, I don't want to hear this.
But you have to pick bed and breakfast, but that turns into lodging, which I don't know if that affects other things. But, but
I know Thomas said it's a dwelling
But the bed and breakfast, right, the bed and breakfast would have one address for mail for like everything else, um, because it is one house, like essentially. Okay. That becomes a mail thing. Right, a practical, um, execution, the address would be for living and like mail and like just quality of life type of stuff, like, it's one address, but then for emergency purposes, you're just labeling these suites so that there's a way to communicate to emergency services where to go if there is an emergency.
Well, how long can somebody rent one of these units?
We do not have a limit on how long someone can rent out a bed and breakfast.
So then somebody could get an address here, and somebody could get mail here.
Well
If there's no mail receptacle, they couldn't. They could get, they have to be sent to, again, like, general fifty-nine Franklin Street, which would, I mean, they'd never get their mail.
So in my, my particular bed, bed and breakfast, I'll very often take a traveling medical professional for a twelve-week contract. I have one room that I rent out on a six-month contract, and that's the person who comes up for the summer. And I think I'm within the law of doing it that way, and I think in larger urban areas, this concept would be referred to as a co-housing environment. That's what they're calling it, wait.
Go ahead.
So you could rent one of these units and have four different individuals co-housing together.
Do any of the, of your renters in that scenario you just described, do that, any of them get mail there? So they use an address there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This is like one shared mailbox.
I think you find that precedent's been set as far as addressing already. So this is, this whole, this whole complex is fifty-nine Franklin Street. It's not fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two. It's fifty-nine. So what's happened in the past, I know for a fact, because I've worked with Larry on this, it would be considered fifty-nine Franklin Street, suite A, suite B, suite C, D, E, F, G, and it's gonna have to be that way, because it's only one address. Nine-one-one addressing is not going to say, all right, you're going to go fifty-nine Franklin Street, sixty Franklin Street, who's the people next to you?
So the way you originally said it, like, is the way I, I had set it up, then Larry said, no, because those doors exit to the back of the parking lot of Water Street, so therefore, they require a Water Street address.
What is the Ellsworth American
I don't know how he's gonna do that, because it's the same building.
Water Street?
As long as that
I'm going deaf, could you
That's for the other building, correct? Yeah, they're, I believe their address is their main printing building, I don't think they use the basement address there.
I don't know how they do that.
A different question, is that okay? All right, unit one D? Am I to assume that the exit for that one is on the first floor, down the stairs?
Correct, yes. That exits to Water Street.
Okay, so moving on then to parking. How many parking spaces do we need to have here? Is it based on the number of dwelling units, which apparently is two?
There's only two.
Or is it based on the number of potential different renters, which would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten?
It, the way the ordinance is written, it's based on the number of dwelling units.
So we could have up to ten different groups of people, or ten different people, totally different people, renting here, and we would have two parking spaces.
But in fact, we have, what, ten parking spaces now?
Ten total.
Yes.
And then there
Okay, well, that's my question, is do we, do we have the ten?
And to complicate it further, we've decreased Can I finish something? Yes, sorry. You know, this is in the downtown zone where there's already credits or reductions in the number of parking spaces you have to have because of all the shared parking, just public parking facilities in the area. They don't make a ton of sense, but it's zoning like A downtown, zoning B downtown, zoning C downtown. And so as long as with your calculation of uses, so like the couple of dwelling units here, the apartment, or the, um, commercial space, as long as that is a reduction in parking compared to what was there before, you don't have to adjust your parking number, or your parking spaces.
So we can have ten renters, plus an office building, or offices, plus, is there a restaurant in there, someplace?
That's what it was, was replaced with some of the dwellings.
Yeah, but you say on
One A, maybe.
Yes, one A, we're using as the last use, because technically, we just shrunk the restaurant space down to one A. So its last use was a restaurant, and that's where we're using our calculations.
Right, but it says, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm following that, because your, your trip generation table shows what was there before, and what's going to be there, and you showing a restaurant in both of those.
Because I'm using, it's vacant, it'll be vacant right now, but I'm using the, its last use, and then using a smaller square footage.
Okay, so in any event, you have some offices, you have a maybe or maybe not restaurant of some sort, and you have, now, the low-rise apartment is really what we're talking about, the, the ten units or whatever.
Yes, plus the two
And how many parking spaces are we gonna have for ten different renters and, and a office and a not-to-be-determined thing? I mean, how many spaces are we gonna provide here?
There's ten spaces on the Franklin Street side, and on the backside
And those aren't being used for snow storage or anything?
A portion of it is, yes.
The corner.
So it's like
And how many parking places out back?
On this lot, none.
Well, as is presently
There is an attached lot that does have parking on it. But that's not
Back up a second, do is ten spaces in addition to the snow storage, or
Ten spaces total by current calculations, including snow storage.
You press that.
Those three, those are rented.
Oh, so basically, the, ask that question.
You may have a case of numerous renters, parking on city parking, in the city parking lots. And you don't have enough, and you don't
That's already occurring in downtown buildings.
Yeah, but I, I mean, this is
We're, we're decreasing the parking needs overall from what should be a forty-seven parking lot by calculation. This, this building should have forty-seven parking spaces today.
That would be the commercial calculation.
That would be if it were built today to the current or past, most recent uses, we'd have to have forty-seven parking spaces. The ordinances allow us to change the use of a building downtown because of the lack of parking, and I know the ordinances potentially say we don't want a lot of lack
But there's a change too, though, is that previously, other than what the two apartments upstairs, all the parkers were during the day. Nobody was parking in city parking lots at night. And I understand, I mean, that can be done, and the city has to deal with it. I mean, it's allowed in the downtown zone, it's just, I mean, I brought this up before, though, I mean, the more and more downtown stores are being converted to residential, you know, there's no parking, you know, they're using up
Practically, practically, there's a difference, right? Because if you drive by the store you wanna go to and the lot's full, you just drive on and do something else. If you drive by your house and the lot's full, you still gotta go home. Practically, there's a difference.
And directly across the street, what is it, thirty parking spaces?
There's
Frankly, yeah.
There's two lots.
Maybe twenty?
There's probably forty, there's two lots directly across the street, and then there's also
Directly across the street.
So, and overnight parking's permitted in those?
Yes.
Yeah? And are they permitted during snowplow season?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure exactly where
Not on the street, but in the parking lot.
In the parking lot?
No, no.
Whole parking lot could be
Well, yes, they can park there, but if they interfere with snow removal, and if the police department can't get in touch with them, those vehicles may very well be towed.
True.
So question for you on, on, on your, um, plans here on the level two, is that, if, if, is that like an alleyway alongside the building where people can walk to get to their apartment, is that what that is?
Yes, Thomas wanted me to point that out for the potential of emergency personnel using that to access the backside of the building, that's why the neighboring building is depicted there as just the line, and then all of the dimensions showing the clearances between the deck and the corner of our building.
So that would be a walkway also?
That'd be a way for them to get from parking to the backside of the building.
Possibly.
Okay.
Where else would they go?
That's not the intention of it, though, that's a very small alleyway.
But there's parking
In the back
towards Water Street, though, right?
This
Public parking, right?
This, this complex, the complex essentially abuts two public parking lots. There's the Water Street parking lot in the back, and then there's the Franklin Street parking lot across the street in the front. And there is, there's, we own an additional lot, which actually, some of that Water Street parking lot lies on. There's a portion of those parking lots that belong to this abutting vacant land below.
Keep in mind, too, that the Water Street parking lot is owned by several properties. It's owned by the city, it's owned by I's, it's owned by the Ellsworth American, and I think you're gonna find.
We own some of it, too.
Along the back of businesses on, on Main Street. Each one of those businesses own a parking space or two.
Right.
So, I mean, it's not well-defined as to where your tenants, you know, could park. I mean, they may very well park in the city old, you know, Water Street City Parking Lot, or they could end up parking on somebody else's private parking lot.
But the point we need to be focused on is the fact that they're meeting code.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address a couple other things here, looking at the TRT report. Under Code Enforcement, Lori, and Robert, when you think each apartment needs to, their own electrical panel, so that's just two panels or four panels?
No, I guess it's how you review it. I, I'm not sure.
I have seven. It's hard to see, behind the bathroom door in each unit, they will have their own electric panel.
So you're talking four units, four panels?
Seven total in that building, probably nine, including the two kitchens, but.
So, so.
That was my understanding, that they had to be within each unit, but I guess they could be within the kitchen, correct?
So I come, so then I come right square back around, all the way around. Why?
If, if an apartment, a single apartment only needs to have one electrical panel, why does each living space that we have here have its own electrical panel?
That may have been a misunderstanding that I had, but.
If they're not considered to be part or individual's living spaces, then why do they have to have their own electrical panel?
So you could look at it as that you have subpanels, each one of those is an individual subpanel from the main panel? Yes, that would be more accurate.
I mean, I think.
My house has four panels.
Your house has four panels? Why?
Subpanels.
It's a rather large home, first of all, and.
But it's a single-family dwelling.
And so the house was originally built in eighteen eighty, and there's been modifications and updates. I just installed a new kitchen that required a new panel to go in to supply electricity.
You don't have, you don't have a panel in each individual bedroom?
No.
Okay, they have one in each individual sleeping space.
That might have been a misunderstanding, isn't it, what I thought I heard?
I believe those are subpanels, but I think that's a discussion we might have to have.
Is it just one meter for the building, though?
Um, each of those two dwelling units would likely have one main panel in each one. But no, every single unit here, like one D, C, B, and A will have their own meter. Currently, this building has six meters on it. Those will be reconfigured and updated.
I'd like to zoom out a little bit.
Makes no sense.
Detail here. So fundamentally, I personally feel like we should be incentivizing more housing in every form. My personal preference would be long-term family housing, but any additional housing is better than where we're at, right? So ops and safety, I'm getting the impression that Tom is okay with the direction this plan is going, and if it continues in this direction, we'll be okay with the final plan, so, okay. Regarding the definition, the ordinance, and the use, which is very up in the air, I guess for staff, are there presidential concerns? Like, if this were approved as is, would you guys fear that this would be used as precedent for some sort of spiraling out-of-control situation going forward, or, or misuse somewhere else? Again, at the end of the day, we want more housing. We want this to happen, but is this approved, if this were approved as, as is, the direction's going, is that gonna be a problem in the future down the road somewhere else?
I would think not, because before it could really catch on, I mean, it's also, people would watch this meeting and see the struggles that the project's going through.
And it's a, it's a bit of a unique location and structure.
Right, but I would think that the city would be already working on short-term rental guidances and regulations that may not dissuade people from looking to do short-term rental, but provide just more regulation and guidance on how they should be executed, which don't currently exist within our ordinance.
Should be incentivizing long-term family housing, but I understand that profit incentives can motivate the short term, but, yeah.
We, we're happy to have Airbnb, or not Airbnb, it's bed and breakfast in the city, too, but it's about what, clearing up some of these lodging definitions, obviously discussed in the past on what do we want a bed and breakfast to look like?
This is for me, and I know we're getting a bit far afield, but this is the difference between meets code and doesn't meet code, and incentivize versus de-incentivize, they're two different things, right?
Right.
I feel like we should be incentivizing long-term family housing, because we don't have enough for the families that are here. But if this meets code, and it's more housing in any form, it's still a net positive.
Right, and if it meets code, it's not, like, the board's decision at this time to decide whether to incentivize something versus not. We do that through the ordinance change process.
And every large subdivision would become in front of the board anyway.
So I, I have another question, and, I mean, I'm very confused, I can tell, I'm very confused. Because if I'm not mistaken, I heard you say each living space is gonna have its own meter. So we got seven, eight, nine different meters? You cannot, as far as I know, you can't run electric meter off of a subpanel.
That may have been misspeaking. One E, one K, one F will not have their own meter from verse, no. Each dwelling unit will have one main meter, and then those would be subpanels. Okay.
So there's two meters.
For this portion of.
For that way.
Meters, correct.
For level two.
Now, if somebody wants to rent one of these spaces, it's not gonna be like, oh, I'll let you go in and get your key from the desk card, it's all digital.
That's the plan, we haven't.
Key code, number.
Correct.
Bet you get you access, then, to a bedroom and a kitchen?
Correct.
Your, your own private bedroom and a shared kitchen?
Correct. So I'd like to make the argument that what we're doing here is similar to a single-family home, where in Bar Harbor, it happens all the time, six people are renting individual rooms in one single-family home. This just isn't considered a single-family home.
Or it's an individual dwelling.
Well, it's very similar to, to a lot of rentals on college campuses, for example, where you have, you know, an apartment, and, but you have separate rental agreements for each bedroom in the apartment.
Similar.
Or the Hamptons in the summertime.
I've never been there.
Know about that. I mean.
We're peasants, we don't know that.
And this is unique, I mean, I'm getting back to the addressing, kind of a unique situation here, I mean.
And that's something we can bring back to Larry, and Tom and I can discuss with him.
Lori, you've been around. Can you think of any structure in, in Ellsworth that one side has an address on one road, and the other side has an address on another road?
No, I can't, but I don't know of any building that fronts two roads like that and has separate facilities for dwellings.
Well, no, I mean, even if it was a business, I guess.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, I kinda like Mike's idea that this is fifty-nine Franklin Suite.
Right, Chummy's was fifty-nine. I don't think he, they had a Water Street address.
Was that?
Chummy's, when it was there, was fifty-nine.
I think the closest thing I can think of, and I don't know the answer to, is, you know, on Main Street, we have front-facing businesses, commercial businesses on Main Street, then in the back on Store Street, you have a different commercial business in the same building, but I don't know how they address the Store Street businesses, off the top of my head.
It'd be interesting to know.
Yeah.
So Lori, does, knowing that, or just, if this is just two dwelling units, and I guess this is the technicality with this, does anything with ADA kick in with this?
No.
Because it's just two dwelling units. But if it had been seven individual living units, would something have to kick in?
Sure.
I believe it was still exempted, because we're not modifying more than fifty percent of this existing structure.
So it has to do with the modification of the building itself?
I thought it was four.
But I mean, you are act, if, if this is phase two, aren't you modifying almost one hundred percent of phase two of this, this L?
Uh, it's the calculations in here. The whole building.
It's on that one page.
Is, the whole structure is one building, even though there's different uses within the structure. So it's about the Ellsworth American floor, those garage bays, this floor. The entire building. The two apartments are all one structure, it's all physically one structure.
So that's how they're looking, that's how you get around it.
Is.
Okay. So I have one other question for you, sir. Looking at level one on your, on your, on your drawing, and level two. The stairway to apartment one D, that comes up from the Water Street side.
Yes.
Into the apartment, I see no door, I see no separation between whatsoever, so, in other words, you come into the stairway, and you go right up into the apartment. I see no, no way of stopping that chimney effect in that stairwell. What do we, what are you planning on doing with that? I don't see a door anywhere. If you come in through the door, outside door, you go right into the apartment upstairs.
Correct. I don't believe there's a code that says there has to be a.
I think you need to check on that.
Top of a staircase.
Cause he's going from the outside.
It's not a common stairwell.
Understood that, but you've also got, this, this whole thing is acting as a chimney. And there's no, there's no stopping. If someone wants to get in through there, or whatever, they're now into the apartment.
Right. How's that any different than going through another door without a stairwell?
You've got, you, you actually have, you actually have a, this is the only means of egress out of that apartment.
There will be a egress window in the bedroom, and there will also be.
That's a means of escape.
There is also a doorway that will be leading to the deck, it reads as a window right now, though, because it's just the existing windows we have in there.
But they're, they're outside stairs, they're not enclosed, they go up into a door. If he, if this was enclosed, I can see, I can see your point of the chimney effect.
I think you need to check, make sure. Plus, that stair enclosure, or whatever it is, needs to be one-hour rated enclosure, because it also impacts other apartments, and the downstairs. Does it not?
No, cause how is it any different if we put a outside set of stairs to for an escape?
No, I'm saying the stairwell needs to be protected by one-hour rated on the inside.
Right, but it's not gonna be on the inside. The stairs are going directly, leading right to the apartment, right from the, from the outside, right from the ground.
But the stairwell is contained within the building, I think, is what you think.
The stairwell's inside the building.
This one, this one here, he talks about the stairwell that.
Right, well, that's the thing, is that we, the updated plans were never, I didn't, didn't show that they were supposed to show, like, here's the door, here's what I'm doing for a stairwell, here's the ass. So like, sorry, then I'm not giving you the right answer, because I don't have the information in front of me that sits there, and I just can't remember the description of what we're trying to do.
So what you're telling me is that this stair enclosure right here will be one-hour rated, correct?
It can be, yes.
It should be, because it does not, does it not impact those areas downstairs?
Correct.
It needs to be separated.
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
But, you know, I didn't have that in front of me, I, so I can't, I hadn't had that in front of me, I had the plans just the other day, so I hadn't had change cards to deal with.
And do I understand that I just heard that Unit one D is going to have an exterior door on that level? Did I just hear that?
To the deck.
Yes.
Yes.
On the Water Street side.
Yep.
Yep. And so that was gonna be my question, too, so it was one B?
That is a Water Street address.
Yes.
Okay.
Just for clarity, I don't show it on the plan here, is, is there a door at the base of those stairs, down on level one to outside? Oh, well.
Um, it looks like it reads as a window, so yes, that is to be corrected.
So snow and stuff is not.
Correct, there is a door there, and that's existing, so.
Lori, it's not in a tree.
It's not in a tree.
It's not in a tree.
That's next one.
Alrighty then.
I, I would, what, what is the trip generation thing supposed to tell me?
Supposed to tell you that the peak hour traffic is less than it was with the original commercial uses.
And so what?
Well, for a structured subdivision, it's really just for your information, they're not required to provide that.
So, so the, that, that coffee shop that was there, which left, right?
Yeah.
That's the sweet spot, only had seven hundred trips a day?
Well, this is not per location, this is from an engineering book that gives you calculations, so.
I know, I know what book it's from.
But no, that's what it says.
It says current uses, and what I'm saying, asking is, were there any thing near seven hundred trips?
No.
Using that coffee shop.
No.
A day?
No.
No.
So.
But it's a fabulous sandwich shop, and they've moved over to Main Street.
Well, okay then, so. Anyway, this, I, you know, this whole table is just problematic. And, and, you know, the idea that we have point four-six trips and stuff like that, I mean, that's just make-believe, I mean, come on.
I took.
I mean, I don't deny that there may be fewer trips, but this is not that estimate.
Right, and again, it was just more for your information, because a trip, a traffic study is not required for a structured subdivision.
I understand that.
Then, good.
That does not do it for me personally, but, you know.
Now, on page two of the revision here, it mentions Knox, Knox Box.
Where are you?
Oh, page two, that's for the fire department.
Oh, gotcha.
What are those keys gonna be to?
Well, he's gonna, when he does, he'll sit there and make a electric, you know, one of the magnet keys, that will be master keyed for all the, for all the spaces, so that way we can go to the Knox Box. But also have, contain inside, it'll have contact information for Cory, or whoever is gonna be managing the property. If we have an event of an incident there, we need to contact, say, hey, we broke a door, hey, we did this to that property. That's what it's primarily for.
Okay, but that, I mean, oftentimes, that's, there's a key in there to get into the building, that's not gonna be the case here, though, is it?
No, there will be.
There will be?
There'll be, there'll be the, the electric mag, magnet key, like we use to unlock our front door here, it'll be that.
To get into what room?
Any of the rooms.
All of them.
Cause he'll be able to master key it to all the rooms, so we can just take that one key and go to, say, one G, put it up to the door, unlock the door, and sit there and gain access. And if the key, if the keypad's broken, then we'll just use the halogen and pry our way in.
So the way that's.
I mean, is that, I mean, like, say, any of John Bates apartment, or any apartment?
Mm-hmm.
You have, you can get into any room, any apartment in that apartment building?
Yep.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, the seventy-two unit we're designing right now, so that way we can punch our own code in for our all seventy-two rooms. So it'll be one master code for all, for all the doors, for all, so they're all be the same.
Yeah.
Just like a motel.
This may be getting a little bit off-topic, but do those magnets, like, do they degrade over time? I know they go bad in my wallets.
They do, that's why, that's why in the maintenance plan is, is that us, as the fire department, we're supposed to go out and check Knox Boxes, and we're supposed to check contents inside the Knox Boxes, ask whoever, check it ourselves, key or that, to make sure that it's still properly working. If not, then we're supposed to make sure we make appropriate contact to whoever to get it fixed right then and there.
So there's some periodic maintenance. Any other questions?
So Cory, are you expecting letters from the water and sewer yet to come for that pro, for that, for this portion of the project?
They'll have to.
Eventually.
Be acquired.
What's that?
They will have to be acquired.
Okay, so they haven't, we, we don't have them tonight?
No, um, not for preliminary.
Well, I like the fact that there's existing fire suppression in this system at this point, and there's an alarm system existing at this point.
Correct.
Those are two huge. Those are two huge pluses.
And I have letters from Sprinters Incorporated, that Cory's already signed a contract with them to extend the thirteen system and he's got a contract with another company to extend the fire alarm system throughout.
That's great, thank you for that.
Is level three as it was proposed before?
Correct.
And there are two units up there?
Correct.
And they both open to a deck?
Yes.
One, that, now, unit two B, is that gonna be a Water Street address? Cause it kind of opens in that direction?
No.
Even though it's not.
Because you end up accessing it from Franklin Street.
I'm sorry, say again.
Those are both existing right now.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, to exit it, you come down that staircase which exits to Franklin Street.
And so that, that's what counts.
Those two units are being renumbered with the entire building renumbering, cause I think right now, they're just like one A and one B or something like that, but.
So, but, but that will be addressed for Franklin Street based on where the stairwell comes. There's the, up, external stairs come down.
Correct.
And where that door is, that comes down that stairwell, it's gonna be a rated door. Cory just didn't put it on the planes for you guys to see, but it was discussed.
Okay.
It was approved in the phase one.
So in your site plan, Cory, it looks like you're using, according to this, potential of three parking spaces for snow storage.
That was an estimated, correct.
That might be an issue. You might wanna consider something because if you start pushing snow, you're gonna block that alleyway. There's a potential block in the alley with, with cloud of snow.
And as that snow melts, it could infiltrate the building.
Historically, that's where it's been put. The whole property is pitched to go down the south alley and back to the drain.
And I agree, it's where it has been, but it doesn't have, it doesn't have access to living spaces on the backside right now, so.
And that was kind of an unanswered question, if that's even viable for access, especially now being that there are Water Street addresses on the back, that might be a move point of keeping that alley open. That's not anything that Thomas and I discussed further after Larry came back with the Water Street addresses. And it sounds like that's still a topic of addressing, to go back to Larry with.
So, well, we've gotta have our public hearing, but there's no action to take place this evening, correct?
This is the preliminary plan, so we would have to vote on completeness of the application.
Before we get to that, I guess I would just ask staff to have another conversation with Larry. I mean, just about that whole addressing, I mean, that's. I mean, I understand they'd be coming in from Water Street, but it'd be fifty-nine Franklin and maybe twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that'll be an odd. One would be Franklin Street is fifty-nine, Water Street would be.
Fifty-eight, it's designated as fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. At least it's closed.
Just go to the site and see where the plans are.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? I'll open up public hearing. Close the public hearing. And a motion from the board.
This is ju, this is the preliminary, so we get another shot. Okay, so I'll make the motion that we accept the preliminary plan review of a revision to existing subdivision entitled fifty-nine Franklin for applicant Cory Wiegand, and owner fifty-nine Franklin LLC is complete.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, a second.
A second.
Any other questions? All available? It's unanimous.
Boy, it would be really good to have a little better documentation this time out. Very.
It better be next time, cause I want.
So, foreword, this foreword.
Yeah, application is complete, it's not application.
That's exactly what I said.
Okay, we'll move on to staff comments.
Staff.
I wanna talk to you guys about.
You don't wanna talk to us anymore? Is that what, is that what I heard you say?
No, I forgot what to talk, blah, 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 what do I wanna talk to you guys about? No, I have the comp plan update. So the steering committee is currently working through the vision statement for the comprehensive plan. The idea was that would be completed in one workshop, but I feel as though after seeing the consultant's newest draft, that just go back to the committee as a whole to discuss further. And so that'll happen, but simultaneously, we're currently looking through the first drafts of the policy and recommendation stage of the plan. It's going to go through my review first and then it'll go to the staff for a focus group review from every department head. And after staff has looked at it, we will schedule public engagement with the policies through the subcommittee process, similar to how we did for the inventory analysis stage. So it'll be a subcommittee for every chapter of the plan. We'll hold those meetings again to get public feedback on the policy and recommendations. And then before those are finalized, I'll be at the council meeting Monday to the twelfth to give an update, or really Barry Dunn will be giving an update to the council.
What was the date?
The twelfth, February twelfth?
February twelfth.
And so Barry Dunn will be providing largely an update on what the work they've done so far for the comprehensive of the council. And then, yeah, those are the main things for the comprehensive plan at this point. The vision statement will also go out for public engagement at some point, but because it's going back to the steering committee for a full workshop, for a second workshop, it won't be until after that date, which is the fourth Monday of February. I don't remember what that is off the top of my head. And then, in terms of budgeting, we're in our budget season, so I have budgeted for two citywide mailings potentially in FY twenty-five, because again, we're foreseeing quite a few changes to the ordinance that we'll be working through with, if, but from the comprehensive plan and from the housing study that's going on currently. And so we'll have to kind of bundle together probably a handful of changes in different areas because it's thirty-five hundred dollars to do one citywide mailing, so it's seven thousand dollars just to do the mailing, sort of the ordinance updates. So bundling would be a smart thing to do.
Someday, this will be a citywide email of all these.
It'd be really nice. But then according to that, in line with the housing study, I would like to say by the end of the month, but maybe by early March, we'll have tried to set up this housing task force that I've brought up a couple of times in different other public meetings. And so there will be planning board participation from that, so start thinking about, maybe as a group, who you'd like to have be part of that housing task force. I would say probably two of you, similar to the steering committee. And then also, I guess at the February twelfth meeting, hopefully we'll have a full board after that, because John and.
I was just gonna ask, so the new nominee is, they're up at the next council meeting?
The same council meeting as the comp plan update, so yeah, February twelfth.
It's like Monday?
Yeah, Monday.
Yeah, it is Monday.
And Mike's promotion.
And Mike's promotion's also on the agenda.
He's still on it?
Demotion.
I don't know, after the night, I'm not sure.
Your responsibility is just to increase. Sorry, you just made a five-year commitment.
You're gonna pay, you're gonna pay increase.
I do?
Yeah.
Oh, hey.
Pay increase from zero to zero.
Yeah, I wanted doubles, double my.
And I think that's it, and I, uh, yeah, I think that's it. Do you have any questions?
These could be added into our book, is that what these are for?
Oh yeah, so you've been given just templates of the checklists we give out for the different types of projects.
That's the stuff?
Yeah, it's, they're blank, I think you usually get, if we fill it out for a project, usually get the filled-out one, but it's at least something for you to look over and have to reference, maybe before. If we get a sketch plan and there isn't a checklist, you can at least look at it and see what to look forward to during that process, just a reference sheet really.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, might I have the floor for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you. I would like to enter into dialogue, and not this evening, of course, after that wonderful episode we just had. I'm a businessman and this is city business and I would like to entertain that perhaps at least some of the meetings take place during business hours rather than at night, particularly in the winter when it's dark outside and I'm night-blind. So could we entertain having that conversation somewhere in the near future? Our staff starts early in the morning and then we keep them here after seven at night. Is that something that would be entertained for discussion?
We can have a discussion. I'm not sure, we've never had that discussion. I mean, I, I think at one point, we started it at seven, just like the council did too. We started at seven o'clock.
Oh my God, I'd be so gone.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that. We could have the discussion as a board, but.
Three of us are retired, right? You have a full-time career, I have a full-time career. It's just something I thought I'd bring up as a possibility.
I think one of the issues has been in the past, well, we don't wanna have a discussion now, but yeah. I mean, I don't get what this guy's talking about.
I can appreciate the logic of the suggestion, I see where you're coming from. The first kind of devil's advocacy that comes to mind is the public hearings, is if it's during the workday and people are at work, they may not be able to attend. I know we don't normally have a bumper crop of people in the audience, but.
Well, for those who have a full-time job, I mean, like Dr. Caligano, I seriously doubt if he'll be available for, you know, at three o'clock at midnight. So I think, I think the five-thirty, moving from seven to five-thirty was kind of accommodating, kind of both sides.
Yeah, I think, I think probably one of the big things though was the opportunity for public hearing. Operationally, we don't typically get marks.
If you wanted a further discussion, we can, but, I mean, I wouldn't.
Anyway, it was just something I wanted to voice. I know I'm a Rotary member here in town and we lost half of our Rotary because we met at night. So now we have a new time Rotary. And I personally have much better energy at seven AM than I do at seven PM, so.
Well, I can say, last night, the, the local road started at seven, went to nine and there was a lot of griping about that. Well, you were there. I can't believe you started at seven.
Very good, thank you for listening to that.
But I think it does lessen the burden on staff, which I think is something significant to consider.
Thank you, but I'm here late anyway.
Do you adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
So, a second minute.
Whatever. We're adjourned.